Good evening and welcome to the August 15, 2017, meeting of the Gilderland Board of Education. Would you all please silence your cellphones and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
The first item on the agenda this evening is public comment number one. We do have one individual signed up that I'm aware of, Jonah Goldstein.
As you know by now, my name is Jonah Goldstein and I'm going to be a senior at Gilderland High School this coming year. I would like to speak briefly tonight about the word excellence. Excellence is something that I believe our district exemplifies in many different ways. We have a powerful academically focused teaching staff that helps to bring out the best in students. We have a successful and responsible athletics department that represents our values. And most importantly to me, we have extraordinary students diverse in experiences, talents, abilities, and passions. We have nationally ranked athletes and exceptional musicians who have played at the Grammy Awards. We have remarkable artists, thinkers, and activists. Our students go on to some of the best universities and most exciting careers across the nation, and they have our district to thank because at Gilderland excellence is what we strive for. Recently however, one of our traditions has come into question. At the beginning of last year, many of my peers started discussing class rank, which they were becoming conscious of as sophomores. Across honors, regents, and core classes, my peers expressed to me and others how frustrated, scared, or stressed that they would be ranked against each other. Nowhere was this alarm more evident than among those students with the highest grades. Although it might seem counterintuitive, the kids that would stand to gain the most from rank, those in the top 10 percent, were largely those who lamented it the most. Several of these students have already spoken at past board meetings, which you might remember, or emailed their sentiments to you, but I think that it is important to reiterate that, especially among the top 10 percent, rank is something that students feel will ultimately harm them. Time and time again, students have admitted that the idea of being ranked during senior year causes them to feel less valued by their school, to feel worthless compared to the people ranked above them. Some of us know that it is merely a number, but a majority of our students recognize that rank hampers some of their best efforts and that if they did not have to contend with another number attempting to define them, they might be better off. This is because there's so much more to students at Gilderland than one number. In our conversations on cabinet, Mrs. McManus said it best when she argued that students at Gilderland are so much more than their academic side. Sure, that is one of the most important things that we cultivate at Gilderland, but the excellence at Gilderland is not one dimensional, it is dynamic. As an institution, we ought not to endorse only one facet of our students, but cherish and celebrate everything they have to offer. No longer publishing rank will not eliminate students' abilities to excel, rather it will strengthen it. Because excellence at Gilderland shouldn't be measured by how good you are compared to someone else, it should be how good you can be against yourself. We motivate ourselves here by trying to be the best that we can be, and that means not only our grades. To close, I would like to say how important it is that this proposal came from all of the stakeholders in our Gilderland High School community. Building cabinet represents not only the administration, but teachers, parents, and students. When cabinet voted unanimously to stop publishing rank for all students in the 2017-2018 school year, they did so because they recognized that the longer our district waits to take the step, the more students might be disadvantaged. I hope that we will be able to help our students, families, and communities with this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda are the consent agenda items, which consist of the minutes of the July 5, 2017, meeting, the CPSE and CSE recommendations, personnel action items, and the financials. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Barbara? Second, Kathy? Are there any questions or comments? No one? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I wasn't there, so I'm abstaining.
Seema will abstain from the minutes, otherwise it passes 7-0. Next item on the agenda are information items, and I will pass it to Dr. Wiles to begin with for one item.
Okay, thank you. We're going to change the order a little bit. We have a guest in the audience here, but my first item is about the 2017 Capital Region JCC Makabi Games, which were held here last week. By all accounts, the games were a tremendous success. Student participants, sponsoring families, and event organizers were all pleased with their experiences here in Gilderland. I'd like to recognize Cliff Noonie and his entire team for going above and beyond to prepare for the event and to respond to every need in a timely, professional, and welcoming manner. I also want to recognize the Albany County Sheriff's Department, who are on site coordinating our security prior and during the Makabi Games. As an added benefit to this experience, the district was able to use the opportunity with the Albany Sheriff's Department to have them tie into both our camera and radio systems. The department is now also equipped with several binders of important information about our district, two keys, and swipe cards that will remain in their mobile command unit if ever needed in the future. Our plan is to have the Command Center here on site once a year in the future to test the systems and review any changes. The Albany Sheriff's Department were excellent partners in planning and a true pleasure to work within this event. So I just want to recognize all those people, and I also want to recognize the Assistant Director for the Makabi Games, who is with us here tonight, Amy Drucker, who has to say a few words. So Amy, please come to the podium, and I believe you have a visual treat for us as well.
I have a visual treat that Amy Haralcheck will show you. So this is an absolute honor for me to speak after one of my kids that I used to coach when he was very little. What a small world. Gilderland High School exemplifies excellence. He actually stole the words from me. Your high school, I'm not even sure you can possibly comprehend the magnitude of the partnership that you had, not just with us at the JCC, but on a much larger level. I want to share with you some of our experience. For example, a week ago, this was not known as the LGI Room, this was our hangtime room. And at all times, from as early as 7:00 in the morning until 5:30 in the evening, this room was packed with kids, probably 200 to 300 kids in one time in this room, making very good use of this space. It is very, very different to look at it as it currently is. Your district took a chance on these games, and I know that because we approached several districts to be our central hub of all activity. And I wasn't a part of the leadership team at that time, so I don't know the reasons why ultimately other schools chose not to, but rather the focus should be on why you chose to. You have, from a board, thank you for taking a chance on us. From administrative capacity, your administrative leadership in this school, there are no words for, and I'll specifically highlight Amy Haralcheck, who's had a longstanding, deep-seated relationship with me within our Jewish community for a number of years. And Amy reached out to me, if not yesterday, it may have been Sunday, and she said, "What is our next partnership opportunity?" And I said, "Amy, I welcome that invitation. Stay tuned. I know for us, we're recovering, and I'm certain for you and your staff, you're recovering, but I welcome that relationship." Your parents went above and beyond, your parents of students who are in the school right now, your parents of students who have graduated from the school were very actively involved for months and months of planning, as well as for the week-long effort that we've had here. Your athletic department, led by Regan, were superb. Not an athletic question went unanswered, very quickly addressed. I have to highlight Coach Penna. Coach Penna and his student athletes stepped up to the occasion. He presented his athletes, his football players, with two options for community service this year. So that's kudos number one, that community service is a part of your athletics program, particularly with your football program. He gave those athletes two options. Option number one was, you need to volunteer with these Makabi Games. Option number two was, if you don't volunteer with these Makabi Games, you are cleaning the locker rooms. We had more football players than we knew what to do. And we are rewarding each one of them, not just with signed-off community service hours, but we're providing them all with team memberships at the Jewish Community Center for a year because they were instrumental in a lot of the work that we had here this week. So thank you. Really, as we say, as Jews, kol ha'kavod, a job well done on that. I have to compliment your IT department. They, I'm not an IT person, so I may misspeak, but they built a whole network or band for us so that we could have as many users as we needed to draw upon your network here, and that went off almost without a hitch. We had a minor problem on Friday that made us very nervous going into our week-long games, but the combination of Amy with Pierre and Dan got us up and running smoothly without further incident. And then I would be most remiss if I did not speak of Cliff, who I will hold near and dear to my heart. He is a gem. He truly, truly is. For the last nine months, I have emailed Cliff with the need for table setup, the need for this, the need for that, and always without incident, he responded, "I've got it, we'll do this, this is great, no worries." And he really went above and beyond. Through him, through Mitchell, I don't know last names, through Mitchell, through Clayton, never once did they approach any question or ask with any type of confrontation. They were grateful, they went above and beyond. We took care of them on a daily basis. We would bring them up snacks and treats, we gave them all lead volunteer t-shirts. We're so grateful for their leadership, and I really, I truly hope that you appreciate what you have in that buildings and ground crew because they are an absolute gem, right down to the end, when Keenhold Park could no longer accommodate our championship baseball game. And can you imagine parents who have traveled far and wide to watch their kids in the gold medal round of a baseball game, and then out of nowhere, Gilderland Center gets hit with a rainstorm that's going on nowhere else in the Capital Region? Keenhold's, they couldn't accommodate us, they couldn't get the water off the field, and we had to leave. I spoke with Amy, so sorry, this is going to embarrass you, but Amy says, "I don't think we can do it here." I see Cliff, and Cliff says, "Well, let's go outside and let's take a look at the field." He looks at the field and he says, "Get him on the bus and get him over here," and immediately got the buildings and ground people to work getting that field ready. And it was such a great way for the Gilderland baseball fields to be showcased, to have all of these parents coming who wouldn't ordinarily come here during the week because they were only going to Keenhold's. Really, from start to finish, I want to say kol ha'kavod and thank you, toadarabah. Amy's going to show just a segment of our closing video that was shown to probably 1,500 people here on Thursday evening as we were winding down, and she edited it. She does not have a career in editing, but she did a really nice job of making sure that we're capturing the highlights of what Gilderland was for us during the week, and really, we can't thank you enough.
I've been waiting, I was here last year. It's all about all these Jewish people coming together as one, playing sports together, and all bonding together.
So my son Zed participated last year in the 2016 Games in Stanford, Connecticut, and he had such a phenomenal experience. The minute he got home, he said, "Mom, next year, can we host?" And I said, "Absolutely." So we love to share this experience, it's great for the kids. Fortunate enough to have a home that has the space for three boys to hang out, and we're really looking forward to sharing Albany and our home with them.
You are about to enjoy a wonderful opening ceremonies as we welcome over 600 athletes, their coaches, and delegation heads to the arena. Welcome to our Capital Region JCC Makabi Games. Let the games begin!
Know that that soulfulness shall feed you, and best of luck in these games.
JCC Cares is the mitzvah portion of the Makabi Games. The kids are repairing the world, tikkun olam, and what we're doing is, we just actually, almost 400 kids made 600 lunches for homeless people. We're going to be making 300 weekend grocery bags for children who don't have enough food at home. We're going to be making 300 literacy bags for kids who don't have books at home, 300 Rosh Hashanah gift bags for Daughters of Sarah Nursing Center, and we're making Thanksgiving cards for Equinox, which is an organization that makes 10,000 Thanksgiving meals for homeless, lonely, and homebound people who otherwise wouldn't have a Thanksgiving meal.
JCC Cares is to help the community at large and give back. It feels good to know that giving the littlest thing to people makes their day.
Well, the Star Reporter program has been going on in the Makabi Games for several years, and it gives the kids a chance that might not be participating in the games to come here and still have an active role, whether it's socializing with their friends, interacting, and ultimately, every day, they're responsible for writing what is essentially a daily newspaper about the comings and goings of the Makabi Games.
I used to really only like to write fiction things, but this is getting me really into writing nonfiction articles. I really like that, it's expanding my horizons. I have enjoyed it a lot because I get to work with people that I really like, I've met a lot of new people. It's very interesting, it's very active, I really like it.
Well, it's a room where all the teams can come after, before games, after you've eaten, or just to hang out with a bunch of different people that you've never met before from different countries even. A bunch of different games you can play, there's pool, ping pong, video games, it's
Thank you, Amy and Amy. Any questions from our board members after getting a taste that this was big?
It was pretty big. A lot bigger than I thought.
Well, I said I think it's time we got about 1,000 people passing through your school, and to cross oceans and timelines, so thank you again.
Well, thank you both, and for sharing the visual as well, it tells a nice story. Thanks so much.
Great, thank you. The next item on the agenda is curriculum and instruction information. Murray?
I am playing the role of Damian Singleton this evening. There are two information items for the board's consideration. The first is three textbooks that are up for consideration. The first is CJ 2017 by James A. Fugan, I think, for use in grades 11 and 12, Criminal Justice. The second is The Art of War by Sun Tzu, translated by Thomas Cleary, for use in grades 11 and 12, Conflict, Justice, and Peace. And then the last is Between the World and Me by Ta-Nehisi Coates, for use in grades 12, Advanced Placement Literature and Composition. So you have the review forms that the faculty review team put together, and I know Damian's hope is that they would be ready for your approval at the October 3 meeting. So you've got about six weeks, actually. And then the second item are, again, for information, these are two annual plans that the board needs to reapprove each year after they have been updated. The first is our 2017-18 Project SAVE Plan, and the second is our Professional Development Plan, again, for 2017-18. And we would hope to have those approved the next time the board meets in September.
Great, any questions? SAVE is an acronym, can you refresh my memory if you know what it is?
SAFE and, I'm not going to remember what they are. Let me look, I'll open it up and it'll say what it is. May take a minute here, though.
It's Safe Schools Against Violence in Education Law?
That's it. That's it.
Great, thank you.
That's a joke.
The next item on the agenda is school business information. Neil?
Thank you, Christine. First item this evening is a discussion about the 2017-18 school tax rates. Typically, the district would adopt tax rates at tonight's meeting. However, the town of Gilderland is contesting the recommended equalization rate set by the New York State Office of Real Property Tax Services. Equalization rate is used to apportion the tax levy equitably and fairly when a school district is comprised of multiple towns. Tax levies shared by town is not determined by the actual taxable assessed value, but instead by a formula that adjusts each town's assessed valuation to reflect current properties for sale. The equalization rate is the mechanism developed for the purpose of converting assessed valuation to full market value. Equalization rate complaint process will not be resolved until the Office of Real Property Tax Services Board meets on Wednesday, August 23, at which time it will issue a final equalization rate determination to the town. The school board has tentatively scheduled a special board meeting to be held on August 31 at 9:15 a.m. in Gilderland High School Principal's Conference Room to approve the 2017-18 school tax rates. Residents need to be aware that the tax bills will likely be mailed later than normal and may not be received until the second week in September. However, tax bill information will be available online as soon as the tax bills are generated. Since the time that information was shared with the board, we also did some checking with board members to see if they could meet earlier than August 31. And we have five individuals that have indicated, five board members that have indicated they are available to meet on Monday, the 28th, if that were the pleasure of the board.
If, I'm unavailable at that time, but if we have five and that's the will of the board, that would be?
That could be.
Okay, so does that make six now?
We have, we have you as one of the five.
I cannot, the 28th is Monday, right?
That's correct.
So you already have five? Who are the five?
Would it help if I told you who the five were?
So they remember?
Just to make sure we have them all correct. Chris McManus, Kathy, Judy Slack, Seema, and Theresa. Five that said they were available. Did I say five?
Did you say the 28th?
Yes.
In the morning?
Yes.
I think I had a different date. Yeah, I thought it was the 20th.
You said the 25th.
Yeah, I thought it was the 25th.
Oh, we did the 25th and the 20th, Linda.
I thought it was, too.
No, I think the 25th had changed.
We actually put several dates out there.
Right.
I thought it was the 31st.
That's what I thought we had finally agreed upon, was the 31st.
Right, but then the town would like to have some consistency with the other school districts in terms of the tax collection period that normally starts September 1st, so they'd asked if the board would consider meeting sooner so that we could continue to be on track with a September 1 start to our tax billing cycle. So that was the reason going back and asking if other people were available sooner or not.
So is that true, so you said the 28th, those are the names you read off?
28th is the date we were looking at.
And Seema's saying she has a problem.
It depends on the time.
Do we have 8:15? 8:15?
I could probably, it's like 45-minute meeting.
Yeah, it's probably a half hour.
I could probably come on the 28th morning.
So that's five, I mean, have we decided?
So if there's five available, I guess the discussion tonight can kind of guide the conversation or the decision that will happen on that day? Is that what other people are thinking, or?
Well, we also have another agenda item that'll talk more about parameters for that meeting, so.
Okay, is that your next agenda item, or?
No, that's in the action section.
Is it possible to lump it all together since we're having this discussion now? Okay.
Would you like to move there at this time?
Yeah.
So basically, what we would thought the board might want to do is provide some parameters around the development of the proposed tax rates. Basically, we prepared a resolution with one thought in mind, which is that if you wanted to provide parameters, we could utilize one that would indicate that the tax, any town's tax rate may not exceed 1.61%, which was the estimated tax rate increase that was publicized prior to the May 2017 budget vote and board election. And right now, when we're looking at the rates, the town of Gilderland would be over the 1.61%. We're pretty sure that would be the result of the final tax, or the final equalization rate as well, so that's why we're proposing that, but that would be one. But that would be one type of parameter option. The board certainly could offer others and that would help to kind of consolidate the meeting a little bit if we had some advance notification of what the interest of the board would be in looking at options.
So just for clarification, when the taxpayers come out and vote on the budget in May, it's not to exceed the number that we have provided them or the information that we provided them at that time?
In terms of the?
The tax rate increase?
The tax rate increase is always an estimate.
Okay.
So the tax rate, we estimated, we estimated at 1.61%. I think your question's more about the tax levy.
I think so.
Yeah.
They actually vote on the budget.
Right. So you vote on, the taxpayers approve the expenditure budget and that's really their role in the process. And then what the board needs to do is come back at some point later on when we set tax rates and using information that we have about the tax levy, the revenue side of the budget, determine what amount of tax levy you want to set and then what tax rates are derived from that calculation.
Okay.
Do you want a parameter for going into that meeting?
We felt it might be helpful if, if there were some interest on the board. You know, there's an option that basically says we take all of the information that we have about assessed valuation, equalization rates, and tax levy, and we tell you it generates these tax rates for the individual towns, and tax rates per thousand. The other option is we do have the ability to make some adjustments at that time as well. And what we would talk about is adjusting the tax levy so that could go down. And we would recommend at that point is that we increase what's called appropriated fund balance. So we have $300,000 that we estimated we would use as part of the revenue budget when we share that at the time of the budget vote and we share the estimated tax levy that we had at that time. But there is the opportunity to lower the tax levy and increase appropriated fund balance. And to, in that case, when you lower the tax levy, the tax rate will go down. But we're adding another source, we're expanding another source of revenue, which is appropriated fund balance.
So can we just have some clarification on a question that was asked at the June meeting by Alan Simpson regarding the tax rate and just, there was some misinformation or misunderstanding that occurred at that meeting? Could you shed some light on that?
Sure. Question was asked about whether the tax levy could, could change. And I said no at the meeting. That was incorrect information. I apologize for that.
Thank you for that. But just so that the board knows, so that at this point we can say we have a surplus in our fund balance, we would want to appropriate that to help bring down the tax rate, potentially lowering it than we had anticipated. That, that was what I was kind of going for.
That's, that's one of the options.
Thank you for that. So if, I don't know if there's any interest in that, but Kathy?
I just wondered, we talked about this in a prior year and there was some sort of impact on the, on the following years, um, tax cap?
Well, there, there is and that's part of what we would talk about with the options. But when we talk about lowering the tax levy, the amount of taxes to be raised, that's also incremented under the tax levy limit calculation. So we start with the prior year's tax levy and then we add the tax-based growth factor to that and then we add the CPI or Consumer Price Index amount. So it, it does get increased over time in the tax levy limit calculation. So whenever you talk about reducing the tax levy, you're also going to realize an effect down the road that says you're working with a smaller base to which future increases will be applied. So it does constrict you a little bit under the tax levy limit formula.
I think an important point that I want to make sure is clear, that the, under the current equalization rate that's being reviewed by the Office of Real Property Tax, if that is not changed, then the, the tax rate in Gilderlin would have to go up over 2% unless we make some kind of adjustment. I wanted to make sure everyone was really clear about that, which by definition means that we need to take some more of our fund balance in order to offset that difference. So that parameter that's in the resolution there already has built into it an understanding that we need to tap into some additional fund balance. We just don't know how much until that rate is set and we know what that difference is.
So can you talk about the fund balance and how much money is in there? What would be the 4% limit and how much surplus we have?
Um, yes, that's in the financial reports that we're going to talk about tonight. But right now, we're estimating that we would be $2,580,000 over the 4% limit.
Okay. And how much of that would we have to appropriate to bring it down to what the estimated limit was?
That's the amount we would have.
That's the amount that we would take from the fund balance to put towards this to keep it at what we had originally estimated?
No. What we would be talking, that we would, we're going to talk about that in terms of a reserve, putting the excess fund balance into a reserve. But we could also, knowing we have fund balance and it would be the appropriated fund balance category, we basically have 4%. We're just taking some of that that we have within the 4%.
Oh, we're taking it from the 4%?
Yes.
I thought we could still take it from our surplus before we re-appropriated that.
Well, we have that option, too. So it's, we can still end up maintaining 4%. We can still draw that out, though, as part of the revenue. So we would, we're going to create, when we do that, we'll be farther under the 4%, which will give us that room. So we would have less of that surplus that would go to our reserve. It would just backfill, if you will.
Theresa, you look not clear.
I'm not really clear about that. So I don't even know how to ask the question.
Let me try to rephrase it a little bit. So we have right now, by law, 4% that we're allowed to keep in surplus, sort of like a savings account. We can use that as a source of revenue, so much like other sources of revenue, state aid and so on and so forth. If we have money in this, in fund balance or, or surplus, we can, we can use that as a revenue item. So we can take some of that, right now, as part of the budget process, we decided to say we're going to use $300,000 of that money that we have sitting in surplus to help cover the cost of, of the budget. So, given state aid and local revenues and also our tax levy, we decided to put all those pieces together, so it becomes a source of revenue. Well, we can increase the use of that. We can take more money out of our savings and put it toward funding of the budget, financing the budget. If we use more, then something else has to be less because we already have a fixed amount for the budget. So what we're talking about is taking the portion of taxes to be raised and shrinking that by $300,000. So take less, we'll get less from the taxpayers, we'll use more from money that we have on hand right now.
Got it.
And we'll be able to replace that $300,000 because we know we already have a surplus for 1617. So we'll be, we'll be able to do that as well.
Makes sense.
Yep, Barbara?
You said we have $2.5 million surplus from the prior year's budget.
From 1617, yes, that's correct.
How much of that do we need to bring the proposed tax rate down to what we had predicted if the equalization rate changes? Or do you need to know what the equalization rate is first before you can answer that question?
We do kind of need to know that information as well. And we might have some tax rule changes from the town of Gilderlin as well. So I, but that's what we can prepare for at the meeting as well, having some direction. It's probably going to be in the, I'm throwing out a number here, about $300,000 or?
So now the rest of that $2 million, some of it we're going to put into the newly established capital reserve fund, correct?
That would be a recommendation, yes.
From that $2 million?
Yes.
I just have a question about the resolution that you're proposing. It says no individual town's tax rate increase may exceed 1.61%.
Correct.
So the equalization, you know, Gilderlin is obviously the, the largest town. So if the, if, the, the total tax won't change, but if, if Gilderlin is paying less, then maybe these other parts of other towns might be paying more? So you're saying that you would be appropriating the fund balance so that, that, to do your own, like, own equalization so that no, no one in any portion of any Gilderlin school district would pay more than 1.61%?
It's, it's, yes. The, the concept here is being true to what the estimate was when the voters went to the polls. So we had said, we estimated the tax rate at 1.61%. We have the ability through the use of, of appropriating more fund balance and lowering the tax levy to ensure that no town exceeds that. We'll, we'll be able to do that. Right now, the only one that's over is the town of Gilderlin. And to be honest, we don't see that being an issue with any of the other towns. But just to write it generically, the intent here of the thought is that we went out with an estimate of 1.61 to the community. Therefore, we're offering an option that says no taxpayer in any town would experience more than a 1.61% increase in their tax rate.
And, and we have a million over our 4% to, to appropriate? Is that, is that what you were saying?
We have, well, right now, we're, yes, we, we have money in appropriate fund balance. We have more than $300,000 in, in there already. So we can appropriate more from that. Beyond that, we also have surplus fund balance generated from 2016-17. So we'll, we'll be able to add to that this year as well.
Okay. I mean, so you don't, we don't know what the, what the equalization rate will be right now, so.
Correct.
But you feel confident that, that we could, we could do this and it won't, that we'll have enough, enough in the fund balance and also that it won't negatively impact subsequent years in terms of our ability to raise taxes, to pay for our programs? I mean, with, with the tax cap and all that?
Yeah, well, that's the, that's the other side of the equation. So we, it's still, the idea here is that we would come back on August 31 and we would present some options. The whole idea here is to talk about what the options might be. Is there a place that you want to land? And then we can put that option together and then we can talk about what are the implications of that. But those are the implications, really. We're talking about use of additional fund balance. We're also talking about the idea that if we lower the tax levy, that does have a detrimental effect under the tax levy limit calculation because you're talking about starting with the prior year's tax levy. So whatever it's set at in the prior year is your starting point for the following year and then it does get incremented. The easier one to talk about is Consumer Price Index. It's maximum with 2% or whatever the Consumer Price Index was for the previous year. But if you're starting with a smaller number, a number that's 300, let's just say $300,000 smaller, then it's a smaller base that's going to generate a little bit smaller number going forward. So that is a consideration in terms of doing something like this.
But you, you put this as an action item, so, I mean?
Action for the parameters. What type of parameters, really what we're talking about?
This, this resolution about not exceeding 1.61% is, is it, you put it as an action item?
Right, but it's, the action is to develop rate options. So if you tell, the action is, do you, would you want us to develop a rate option like this or not? Or in some other option? What we're trying to do is not come with an empty slate, but to try to come up with some ideas of what are people's interests? Is it an interest of the board that we kind of hold true to what we've told the taxpayers about 1.61%?
Yeah.
If so, we can put an option together like that. If, you know, you want an option, and certainly one of the obvious ones is we, we just see where things land based on equalization rates and, you know, current fund balance situation, we will present that option. The board will decide amongst the options which one, what the actual tax rates will be. So we were just trying to get, tonight, you know, we're putting together a meeting, so just trying to narrow the focus of the meeting, knowing people are giving up time in the morning. Would you want to give us some parameters to bring to the table to have some discussion about?
I'm good with the setting this parameter because it's, trying to keep it close to accurate as to what it was, you know, what we put out with the, the election or the vote that day.
How much would you put into the capital reserve fund?
Um, right now, we'll talk about that a little bit later. It's, the recommendation is whatever's left over.
Of the entire $2 million?
Of the amount that exceeds the 4% maximum allowed by law. So what we're talking about in every instance is that above the 4%. So maintaining 4%, which we're allowed to do by law, and not anything above that, putting that into one of the reserves.
Basically, what you're saying is if we were to choose to put maybe $1 million to that and $1 million to reduce the tax cap further, we would then be penalized the following year because we would be starting with a lower base, basically.
It would have a detrimental, I mean, we wouldn't be penalized, but we would be start, we would putting, be putting ourselves in a position where future tax levy increases would be more limited than, than otherwise.
Are there any other?
Well, that the, that the idea is to lower the, do the equalization rate to lower the rate in Gilderlin. So, I mean, I, I don't know what it's going to be, but, you know, that's, that's, I think that's a challenge to the, to the equalization rate that it's not, that it's not properly calculated. So, I mean, I don't, I guess I'm just wondering, like, if you're going to say, like, lock us in with a, you know, if we're going to lock us in with a, a specific parameter, is that, is that a good idea before we know what it is?
We have to bring options to you. Alls we're trying to do is narrow the number of options, so. You don't have to give us any options. We can, we can bring what we would normally bring. We just thought it would be helpful at this, at this meeting, knowing that we're going to do a special meeting, that, that the community might be interested as well and kind of knowing what the thoughts of the board are before we, normally, we publicly have the, the discussion about the development of the tax rates. So this is an opportunity to kind of have some of that discussion in the form of parameters before we get to the action, to the part of where the board meets and actually sets the tax rates. So that was, that was the idea here, was to talk a little bit about it publicly here. So when we come on the 31st, people have a sense as to what the board is thinking.
Is it the 28th or the 31st?
Well, I think that still needs to be determined as well, so.
It was the 28th so that they could get the bills out.
28.
By, by, by September 1st because they need three days.
Well.
If there's five people, then it will be the 28th. If not, then it will be the 31st. And we will clarify that via email.
Neil, I, I think one of the questions that maybe Alan had asked, in last year, we had quite a bit of a surplus. And yet, we sit here as board, sort of nitpicking, adding, you know, a point two position or whatever, and we're sitting almost consistently on pretty large surpluses. So is there a way that as we budget in the future, I know you can't get it down to 500,000 even, but that we can maybe provide more programs for the kids and whatever, be it, you know, courses, teacher aides or whatever, versus having at the end this large surplus that obviously would still help the taxpayer if we put it in the capital reserve fund, you know, for future projects? I think it'd be a big help there. But I think some of the frustration is that, you know, we, we have to bother and trade as we're developing the budget. And of course, my baby, you know, the enrichment, we only go, you know, half, half, half. And here, we, we're sitting on $2 million bucks and maybe we could easily have had a full-time enrichment teacher in, you know, each of the schools. So I, I think, you know, that's part of sort of the mindset, at least myself, you know, can we put this money to good use immediately for the kids versus, you know, helping the taxpayer in the long run, you know, by putting it in the capital reserve? I guess what I'm saying, can we somehow or other be a little more realistic in our program planning if we have this amount of money that we could do more for the kids currently than taxpayers in the future? That, that's just an observation.
And obviously, a budget is planned. It's an estimate. There's no precise data for any amount of number, any number in the budget, really. We have to estimate what we might get in terms of revenue, what type of expenditures we might have. We're not consistent from year to year in some areas of our budget. We do our very best to come up with an accurate budget, but it is based on estimates. We're developing a budget, you know, three months in advance of a 12-month school year and we're trying to finalize imprecise information. And we really don't know who's going to come through our doors, what needs they have. We can make our best guess about that and whether there are students with disabilities, our regular student with enrollment. We've been dealing with some enrollment issues that have come up, so we do our best. And I think, you know, this isn't, what we do is not much different when, than what you would do as a homeowner if you were to sit here October 1st and say, you know, I want to estimate my budget for January through December. And what would you use for how much gas you would consume? and what would you use for how much gas you would consume and at what price? You know, you could do that with electricity. You could do that with your heating, with medical bills, all of those things. We do have the requirement, though. Once we set a budget, an expenditure budget, we can't change that. So, if we're wrong, and we have expenses that exceed our budget, then we're in one of those situations the school districts sometimes find themselves in, which is mid-year cuts. And now, all of a sudden, we're working the other way. We're saying, you know, children can't have the things that they need because we don't have enough money to pay our bills, and we have to take action during the course of the year. But it's not like you and I, where, okay, if things go in the other direction, medical expenses are higher, we can go to our savings account, we can spend more. Once the voters establish the amount of the expenditure budget, we cannot increase that, even if we have money available in our bank account. We can't go get it and spend more and use it for a purpose once it's set. So, we have to make sure we have enough money to meet the needs of kids by program, by building. And we try to do a very thorough and accurate job of trying to make sure we know... We estimate those expenses. But we do have variations, and we do have to account for changes that occur. Our administrators, you know, who's coming, who to expect to come, who's leaving, what kind of needs what we have, all of those things. Everybody would want it to be more precise. I understand that. I would like it to be more precise. But at the end of the day, it is a budget. And, you know, any municipality that has a budget, whether it's the state of New York or the school district, we all do our best to make the most accurate budgets possible, but it's still dependent upon the circumstances that occur in a given school year.
I remember a couple of years ago, we got a quarter of a million dollar hit from Bosie's that had we not had the fund balance, we would have been in big trouble.
Yeah. And I remember, too, when gas prices shot up, and we didn't have enough money for fuel for buses. We were $200,000 or $300,000 over. In that situation, we've gone the other way. But those kinds of things happen. Sometimes, we find ourselves on the other side of those situations as well.
I just think there has to be a happy medium. You want to have some sort of a savings or a surplus, but at the same time, to ask taxpayers for more money when we're sitting on a lot. It's kind of like, you know, I have a whole bunch of money in my savings account, but I'm going to ask mom and dad for some more money because I don't want to use that money. So, I just kind of feel like it's asking more of taxpayers when I don't think that's appropriate. I don't think it's fiscally responsible to do that. But I also agree that you need to find a happy balance where you have money socked away, but at the same time, you're not socking it all away and asking for more money. So, you just... I mean, I don't know what those parameters are, because I don't know what numbers is appropriate. But I also just think, as a taxpayer myself, as everybody else is and others, you want to be fiscally responsible and not ask for more when you're sitting on money as well. And I don't think you should empty it either. I don't think you should just say, "Okay, we'll use all that surplus." But at the same time, you can't not use a chunk of it. That's just my opinion.
Okay. And this is certainly a process to address that. This is the process we can make that change.
Yep. I think this resolution seems reasonable to me because I would not feel comfortable asking the taxpayer to increase the amount that they had anticipated would be coming to them, especially when we do have this surplus. So, I would say anything over 1.61 should be taken from our surplus in the fund balance.
Reloading now?
Sure. Can I have a motion to approve the resolution related to the 2017-18 school tax rate parameters? Barbara, second, SEMA. Are there any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
I oppose.
Kathy's opposed?
Okay.
Pass is 6-1. Thank you, Neil.
Okay. Going back to the information section again. So, the second item this evening was the VersaTrans MyStop bus arrival tracking app. Beginning in this school year, parents will be able to utilize the VersaTrans MyStop app to obtain the estimated time of arrival for their child's bus. This technology was made available through the purchase and installation of a live GPS device for each of our school buses this past school year. The GPS system allows our transportation staff to visually pinpoint the exact location of each bus in real time throughout the day, improving the district's ability to better manage situations that may occur down the road and more efficiently and effectively deploy buses to meet needs. Parents are able to tap into the GPS system by downloading the VersaTrans MyStop app and entering an ID number and password for each child. So, if you do have multiple children, there's a way to do that for each child. Parents will then be able to log into a secure database to view the estimated time of arrival for their child's bus. Parents need to be aware that there are a number of factors, such as the device refresh rate, whether it's a phone or a computer, and network connectivity and speed that will affect the accuracy of the estimated time of arrival. Our testing has shown that in some instances, the estimated time of arrival and the actual time of the bus arrival may differ by a minute or more. The app will be most beneficial in those instances where a bus may be running late due to traffic, weather, or other unforeseen circumstances. Parents should also refer to the transportation newsletter for more information on the VersaTrans MyStop app. So, certainly, we're happy to roll this out. Again, we just want to make sure that parents are not waiting until the last few seconds according to the app to make sure that their child is out and ready for the bus, because it does depend on a lot of factors in terms of your actual device and the system you're using and how quickly that information gets updated. So, we settle in pretty early in the year in terms of the routines of drivers getting there about the same time. But we feel the real benefit, again, is when a bus is delayed, and you don't expect it to be delayed, to be delayed, when is it coming? And I know we've all been in those situations, wondering, is it going to come? Is it coming around the corner? Is it five minutes out? Is it 10 minutes out? This will allow you to do that. The only other question I would make is, there are other applications called MyStop, and you need to make sure you pick the VersaTrans one, because that's the one that we are using.
SEMA.
So, last year, it was piloted, right, with some people?
Yes.
And I remember, I don't remember who mentioned it, there was like some glitches with it, like showing up, like five minutes, and then two minutes are dropping out. So, that's all fixed now, or...
Well, there's still going to be issues, and that's what we're working on. It's the accuracy of the timing. And the company has said this. I mean, they're getting a signal, and then, they're sending it out onto... Now, we're going out to outside carrier systems and how they push data, who gets priority, you know, all of those things. So, by the time the signal is set from the bus, received back by the company through their server, back out through a carrier service, and back to the end user, there could be some delay, and a lot of it depends on network traffic, speed. We're using other carriers, networks, and systems in order to push that data through.
So, you predict, though, that this will be available beginning of the school year?
Yes. Yeah.
So, we were one of the pilot families.
Oh, good.
And, you know, my husband and I would have the... Each of our phones, and it might not be exactly the same time on each of our phones, but it's the ballpark, you know? It's not second by second. So, I think in the newsletter that went out to families from transportation, I think, made that point, because you'll be disappointed if you think it's down to the second that you can walk out the door. It's within a minute or so, I think. And it was just fine.
Is there any other means of informing families? Are we just doing... Is it just in the newsletter, or was it going to our website or SNNs?
We can do website and SNN as we get closer to the start of the school year. The cards for transportation are going out on Monday, so people will be tuned in, I think, to, "Oh, now I know my bus route." So, I think they'll be looking for more information about that.
Can we move along?
Sure.
Okay. Next item is the Cobblestone Schoolhouse. Funds were included in the 2017-18 budget for repairs to the Cobblestone School to maintain the structural integrity of the building. Those repairs are expected to be completed soon. The question that remains is whether the district wishes to maintain ownership of the property. The deed contains a right of reversion clause that in the event the property is not used for school purposes, it would revert to the heirs of the original property owner, Stephen Van Rensselaer. The district's school attorney is in the process of contacting two separate individuals, and we've had another one come in today, that may possess an ownership claim to the property. From that inquiry, the district may be able to identify a legitimate heir to the property, and if so, gauge their interest in either reacquiring the property or relinquishing ownership of the property to the school district. Consideration needs to be given to developing a plan for the building and property based on either continued ownership or the transfer of ownership. If continued ownership is the desired option, further assessment of the building's condition and property will need to occur. The assessment will need to be conducted with an eye toward the desired use of the building that may require newer, updated electrical, heating, water, or sanitation systems, or improvements to other aspects of the structure that fall within the New York State requirements for historic building preservation. Sources of funding will need to be identified and the impact on the upcoming 2018-19 budget and future school budgets analyzed. If transfer of ownership is the desired option, thought should be given to the sale or donation of the property, the new owner's intentions for the building and property, and potential restrictions, if any, to be placed on the buyer or recipient. So, really, what we're looking for is some direction from the board as to next steps regarding the Cobblestone School.
Sure. Any comments on this? Barbara?
We basically said when we're having the discussions, let's find out if there are heirs to the property. And apparently, there's two potential, maybe a third. I think we should continue talking to those people. I mean, do they have an interest in the property or not? I just can't see pumping money into this unless we have curriculums developed around it, you know, be it of a historical nature. Maybe these people would like it. Maybe they don't. But we should know that fact before we proceed any further, it seems to me.
The school attorney has to verify, basically check and see if any of these claims are true.
Right. So, the first step that we decided to do, since we did have individuals come forward, and one that we're aware of through another newspaper article, is to reach out to them. If it's relatively easy and clear to determine their legitimate right to the property, then we wouldn't have to go through a legal process to do that. So, as a first step, it was reaching out to those individuals, saying, you know, "Are you interested in laying claim to the property, number one? If you're not," and we know that as well, but also trying to determine whether you have a legitimate claim to the property. It could be a rightful heir. So, that's really the first step that we're doing. But knowing, too, that this will take some time. And well, in October and November, we're going to start talking about a budget again, and, you know, whether everything will time out well enough for our plan to know whether we're continuing to invest into the schoolhouse or not, or, you know, for the board to think about if we do either have interest or not have interest. Even if we have an heir, does the school district want to relinquish control of the building to an heir or not? So, I think those are some of the factors.
I thought we had to. I thought we had to, since we weren't using it for educational.
Well, and I think that's the question, is there interest in creating an educational use for the building so that it wouldn't fall under that provision?
Why would it be taking so time-consuming if we already have three people identified as potentially having legitimate interest in the building? Phone call, "Hey, Jimmy, you know, you're a potential heir." And some of them, we know are legitimate. Why is it so difficult to ask those three individuals, "Do you have an interest in the property?" Or do you... Will you sign it over to the school district? At which point, then, we can decide. Either we sell it or, you know, have teachers develop a curriculum to use it, because we've been in violation of the deed for many years now, probably a good 15 years, if not maybe more. So...
It's in the determination of really if you're a legitimate heir. We've actually got two claims from somebody on a family name that's not Van Rensselaer that claimed. But they're two different parties claiming they run through the same line of families. So, you know, who's the direct heir and determining that as well. So, it's not as simple as somebody coming forward. But and they would also have to provide documentation. Do they, you know, by deed, can they substantiate that the property's been transferred to their heirs? And then again, are you the first heir or not in order to have that decision?
And there's always also the question of, you know, what are they going to do with it? Because if it's on the national register, it's not like they can just tear it down and build their mansion, you know? It's like, you know, it's a historical structure. So, I mean, and also, we're talking, what, 1860? So, maybe finding an heir that's a direct heir or whatever isn't... I mean, I can see it would be simple. So...
Are there any other questions or comments on this? So, does it sound like continue to talk to the potential families and report back?
Certainly can do that. Yeah.
And I know, in terms of timing, because we will be starting the budget for next year. When did you say? In the fall, October?
October.
October, November, we began the conversation.
So, we'll keep this on our radar as that transpires? Okay. Thank you, Neil.
You're welcome.
Next item on the agenda is superintendent information. All right?
I have two more items. The first is a report on the opening of school activities. Opening day for staff will be Thursday, August 31st, and we're going to begin with breakfast at 7:30 a.m. in the high school, and we'll begin the program at 8 a.m. This is our event to welcome everyone back and do some service recognition, introduction of new staff, and kick off the year. And I know many of you will be there for that event. So, we always look forward to that. We also have a number of kindergarten welcome activities, beginning on September 5th. Some of our elementary buildings will greet parents and students for our kindergarten ice cream social. And this is a chance to meet teachers, get to know their classrooms, bring supplies, and take a bus ride. Some of the PTAs have coordinated ice cream socials to be held during the opening days. This year, our kindergarteners will begin school on September 6th for a full day. I wish Mr. McManus were here today for that. A schedule from each of the building has been mailed home outlining their information because they all do things just a little bit different. And then, we have some orientation programs. The middle school, sixth graders will have their orientation on Tuesday, September 5th, from 8:45 to 10 a.m. New seventh and eighth grade students to the district will have their orientation on Wednesday, August 30th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And then, our high school orientation for ninth graders and for new students will be Tuesday, September 5th, from 7:30 in the morning till 11:15 a.m. And then, the first day of classes, K-12, is Wednesday, September 6th.
Yay!
Yay!
Good for parents.
And then, I just want to recap our very busy summer just a little bit to give you a flavor of the many things that were happening here. This week marks the... Actually, it was last week marked the end of our fourth year taking part in regional summer school program. This regional program was held at Mahanison High School. We had 76 students from grade six through 12 who participated, and we very much appreciated the support of our colleagues at Bosie's in Mahanison for providing this opportunity for our students. And then, last week, we also concluded our extended year program for students with disabilities at Gilderland Elementary School. And the Bosie's extended year program for students with disabilities was hosted at Westmere Elementary School. So, I want to thank the faculty and staff who contributed to those successful programs. Last week, Camp Invention was held at Pine Bush Elementary School. 160 students participated, which was an increase of 50 from the prior year. It was a tremendous experience. I went to the final ceremony, and it was very energetic. That's how I'll describe it. The kids had a great time, and the teachers loved the opportunity to work with students. We also had a successful English as a New Language program at Gilderland Elementary School, and we had 52 elementary-age students participating. And last but not least, at FMS, the Butterfly Station had another successful year. Over 1,550 visitors came to visit, and our students and teachers just did an amazing job once again. Big thanks to Carol Kelly, who was the coordinator for the program this year, and her teacher helpers, Lisa Watson and Jill DeBois, for supporting our students to become docents. And I don't know, in my materials, I shared the feature photo on the front page of the August 9th Times Union, and it was a great photo. And the butterflies were released for their long journey to Mexico Friday, August 11th.
They're in Georgia now.
They're in Georgia now? You're tracking them? So, we had a great summer. Lots of activities, and everything went really very smoothly, which is a tribute to all the people who play a part in crossing Ts and dotting Is. So, I'm really pleased with how things have gone.
Marie, what about the organic garden? How did that fare this summer?
I don't have the poundage of vegetables, but again...
I mean, the organization, I mean, the new...
They continued planting and growing and harvesting, and I will find out exactly where we landed on all of that.
Yeah. Because, remember, we had all that issues about who was going to do what.
I haven't heard much of a word at all.
Well, it's good in a way.
Yes, it's usually good. But I'll get that data and put it in Friday's update.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. Now we will move on to school business management action items. Neil?
We have a number of items this evening. We'll start with summer school classroom rental agreement with BOCES, and we're asking for approval of the summer school special education classroom rental agreement with BOCES for the period that comprises this summer. We had nine classrooms that we rented to BOCES at Westmere Elementary, and we received a revenue of twenty thousand seven hundred dollars for that.
May I have a motion to approve the rental agreement with BOCES? Kathy, second. Barbara? Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes seven zero.
Next is classroom rental agreement with the Capital District YMCA for the two thousand seventeen eighteen school year. The Y rents three classrooms for after-school care. That generates twenty-nine thousand one hundred dollars for the school district, or will during the course of the two thousand seventeen eighteen school year.
May I have a motion to approve the rental agreement with the Capital District YMCA? Kathy, second. SEMA? Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes seven zero.
Another classroom rental agreement, this is with Living Resources. They provide an after-school program here in the high school for middle school and high school students with disabilities. And basically, they've been here since two thousand fifteen, two thousand fifteen sixteen school year. It's a nice program, we're happy to have it here, and we'd like to continue to have that program within our school district. We receive a thousand dollars in rent from Living Resources.
May I have a motion to approve the rental agreement with Living Resources? Gloria, second. Teresa? Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes seven zero.
Next is an internship agreement with Ithaca College, and that's to accept students for internship and practicum experience, and this would be for the period September first, two thousand seventeen, through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty, with the option to renew the agreement for an additional three-year term.
May I have a motion to approve the internship agreement? SEMA, second. Gloria? Questions or comments?
Question? How do we do an internship with Ithaca? How does that work?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
How do we do the internship with Ithaca?
These are student teachers, that work with our regular classroom teachers. So the colleges will reach out to me, they will ask if there are any teachers that would like to take on a student teacher. I'll reach out to principals, and they'll reach out to their staff, and then our teachers apply to be cooperating professionals, and we match them up with student teachers.
Sounds good.
Awesome.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes seven zero.
Next, we are seeking the approval for a number of agreements, we'll do them as a single item, if that's okay, for special education services, and we're recommending, and this is for the two thousand seventeen eighteen school year, we're recommending approval of the agreement with Advanced Therapy. Karen Amico Dzineski, I'm sorry if I mispronounced that, the Center for Discover Incorporated, Barbara Collins, For Winds, Kathleen Lansing, there's a shared services agreement with Mahanison Central School District, software for translation services, and an agreement with Woods Services as well.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the services agreements? Kathy, second. Gloria? Questions or comments? Barbara?
I have a question. The two OTs, Amico and Barbara Collins, are they part-time, you know, one is a part-time agreement, are they replacing the individual that we lost, or are these new needs that have developed since then?
Going to have Lisa Knowles come up and answer my question.
Karen actually is a physical therapist in our district, we've contracted with her the last several years. She provides physical therapy services and supervises our physical therapy assistant in our district. And Barbara Collins is to provide services to a student at St. Madeline Sophie's. We're required to serve students who attend private schools in our district, and there's a non-resident student attending that, so we actually can fill back their home district and get reimbursed for those services.
So these are OT people, then?
Karen is a physical therapist who is also certified as an OT, but she works with us as a physical therapist. Barbara Collins is an OT, but will providing services to a non-resident student at St. Madeline's.
At Madeline Sophie?
At Madeline Sophie's.
Now, had that student been there before?
No, new entrant.
This is a new person? So we're under no compulsion to rehire off a list or anything?
This is a unique situation. It's a parentally placed, non-public school that we provide services to, and I typically contract out to other providers to serve that, so to maintain continuity of service for those students where they're not being transported in the middle of the day to our district, and so our staff don't have to travel, and we can get reimbursed from their home district. So we receive revenue, or offsets the costs that we're paying.
So these aren't our own kids from Gilderlin, these are kids from other districts that are...
Karen serves students in our district as a physical therapy provider. We've contracted with her since I started here four years ago. Barb, this is, Barb Collins, is to provide services at St. Madeline Sophie's only.
But if one of our own people asks for leave of absence, or decided to retire or everything, do we go back to our old employees and offer them that position, or how does that work? Like with the teacher, there's a list, in other words, if...
Right, there's a prepared eligibility list.
Right.
This does not meet the criteria to recall someone. This is, first of all, it's a volatile assignment, the parent could place their child someplace else at any time, but usually it's a point five or greater, we would go to civil service for the retention list for that.
This is for one student at St. Madeline's. That's a non-resident.
An hour or two a day, or a week, or whatever?
Two sessions a week.
Two sessions? Forty-five minute sessions, probably?
Half hour.
Thank you.
Lisa, while you're there, did we have students at St. Madeline Sophie's last year? That required...
Not that received any services.
Okay, all right. I wasn't sure. I thought for some reason that there was something with traveling of our own staff...
Speech. You were thinking of speech.
We have a speech provider. Kate Lansing provides speech services to students at St. Madeline Sophie's, so I have typically contracted out for those services.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments on these agreements? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes seven zero.
Next is a resolution to approve the final two thousand sixteen seventeen BOCES service contract, and the preliminary two thousand seventeen eighteen BOCES service contract. And this is required by educational law, so that BOCES aid can be paid, and we're basically attesting to the services that are listed on the contracts.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the BOCES service contracts? Barbara, second. Kathy? Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes seven zero.
Next is a resolution for a municipal cooperation agreement, and this comprises fourteen school districts, twelve of the thirteen suburban council school districts, and the city of Albany, and the city of Schenectady, and their school districts. And that's to enter an agreement for the reconditioning of interscholastic football equipment. And this is something that was started in two thousand eleven, where each school before that time had contracted for their own services in terms of reconditioning football equipment. The suburban council athletic directors got together and decided they could get some purchasing power by all banding together and going out to vendors. In that regard, at that time, we estimated our district alone would receive three thousand dollars in savings just by being part of the cooperative. Since that time, it's been renewed once, this is a new five-year agreement, because we're adding the two new schools, so we expect even greater savings available from that. And just for your information as to what we do with reconditioning of football equipment, it's helmets, shoulder pads, and game uniforms. All helmets are inspected and replaced if they show signs of failure or deterioration, or if they are beyond the expiration date, which typically is seven to ten years. For football helmets, all internal components are replaced, so they get new face masks, chin straps, and external parts are replaced as needed, and an updated itemized inventory and historical tracking system is supplied by the vendor. Shoulder pads are thoroughly cleaned to prevent MRSA, and all removable parts are inspected and replaced as needed. Rejected shoulder pads are replaced with new pads, and all game uniforms are reconditioned as well. And it's estimated as part of this new bid, that combined, there will be over twenty-two hundred helmets and shoulder pads that will be reconditioned annually.
Great. Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the municipal cooperation agreement? Teresa, second. SEMA? Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes seven zero.
Next is a resolution for contracted transportation services for the two thousand seventeen eighteen school year. The bid award is recommending specific routes that we're awarding to Durham School Services in the amount of two hundred and twelve thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars. Northland Transportation in the amount of forty-seven thousand sixty dollars, and Brown Transportation in the amount of forty-four thousand seven hundred and seven dollars. And these are for schools and placements out that are not part of the school district, so it's transportation to outside placements.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the transportation services bid? Gloria, second. Kathy? Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes seven zero.
Next is an emergency preparedness sheltering agreement with Our Lady of Mercy Life Center. In that case, Gilderlin Central School District would serve as an emergency shelter site for them in the event of a disaster. We have agreements with many area nursing homes and other agencies, and likewise, we have agreements with other places to go to them if we need to as well. So it's a good idea to have these agreements, and as well to keep them up to date, and contact information, and so on. So Tim Murphy, our BOCES safety specialist, has been very good about keeping on top of these and getting them renewed, so that we have current information, and we're ready to act if we need to.
May I have a motion to approve the emergency preparedness sheltering agreement? Gloria, second. Kathy? Are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes seven zero.
Next is an emergency pesticide application for poison ivy, and we're asking the board to approve the eradication of poison ivy located on the athletic fields and playgrounds at Gilderlin High School, Farnsworth Middle School, Lynnwood Elementary, Westmere Elementary, Altma Elementary, and the grounds behind the transportation and maintenance buildings. And this would warrant an emergency application of pesticide to protect public health in accordance with Education Law Section four oh nine K. This is not unusual, we get to this point in the year, particularly as we get ready to use our playfields for athletic events and children coming back, that we may have poison ivy that's grown in order to protect those children, we do do an emergency application in accordance, and that's overseen by Tim Murphy, our health and safety specialist as well.
May I have a motion to approve the emergency pesticide application? Barbara, second. Kathy? Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes seven zero.
Next is a resolution to prove lunch and breakfast prices for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand seventeen eighteen school year. We're actually requesting, or Linda Mossip, our food services director, is not requesting any increase in prices for next year, so elementary breakfast would remain at a dollar ninety-five, and lunch at two dollars and eighty cents. At the middle school, the recommendation is to maintain breakfast price of a dollar ninety-five and three dollars and five cents for lunch, and at the high school, it would be two dollars and fifty cents for breakfast and three dollars and five cents for lunch. And if you read Linda Mossip's memo, when you increase lunch prices statistically, there is data that shows that participation drops off, so in the analysis, we're looking at an expected decline in participation as we increase prices. She's provided three scenarios of increasing a nickel on a dime and fifteen cents, and what that does to expected participation, and then where do we end up financially? She and I both believe it's in our best interest at this point to maintain the current lunch and breakfast prices that, under the formula, would yield the most profitable scenario for the school district.
May I have a motion to approve the breakfast and lunch prices? SEMA, second. Gloria? Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes seven zero.
Next, our general fund transfers, and this is for the two thousand sixteen seventeen school year. The transfers total one hundred and three thousand thirty-two dollars, and are delineated in your materials.
May I have a motion to approve the general fund transfers? Gloria, second. SEMA? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes seven zero.
The next item is appropriation to reserve funds. We talked about this a little bit in our other conversation. Basically, the recommendation is for the board to authorize the funding of the capital reserve fund labeled two thousand seventeen, the one that was approved by the voters in May, to receive the amount of unaside fund balance exceeding four percent of the two thousand seventeen eighteen voter adopted budget pursuant to Section thirteen eighteen of the Real Property Tax Law. So, again, when we talked about this, the district's only legally allowed to keep four percent in unappropriated fund balance for non-designated use, anything above four percent, you have to do something with. We have reserve funds that are set aside for that purpose for known anticipated expenses. The discussion that we've had at the board level when we're creating the capital reserve is that if we did have surplus money, it would be good to put it in that particular reserve. We don't have to specify a set dollar amount, we won't know that until the auditors are completed with their work and make all their adjusting entries, but we've used this resolution in the past that provides the flexibility, whatever the final number is, to take that amount in excess of four percent, and again, the recommendation is put in the capital reserve.
May I have a motion to approve the appropriation of reserve funds? Barbara, second. Kathy? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes seven zero.
Next is the appointment of the tax collector. We need to appoint John Rizzo as the tax collector for the towns of Bethlehem, Knox, and New Scotland, until his successor is appointed in Swarn. We had already appointed a tax collector at the organizational meeting in July, but she has since resigned her position with the district, so John Rizzo will be taking over those duties and responsibilities.
May I have a motion to approve the appointment of the tax collector? Gloria, second. Kathy? Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes seven zero.
And then finally this evening, we have two donations that we're very grateful for. First is a folding music stand of violin text from Mr. Jeffrey Connolly. The second is a table saw, planer, drill press, bandsaw, scroll saw, joiner, dust collection system, and various table saw blades and jigs from Ms. Janine Javorsky, which our technology department is very anxious to receive. Thanks to both of those donors.
May I have a motion to accept the donation? SEMA, second. Gloria? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much for the generous donations. It's nice to see this on the agenda. Thank you, Neil. Next, we move to board president action items. This relates to the class ranking policy. We've had a lot of discussion on this. The Act tonight that we are proposing is the elimination of this policy, which is number forty-seven forty-one. May I have a motion to eliminate the class ranking policy? Barbara, second. SEMA? Are there any questions, comments, discussion? Barbara, do you want to add anything to this, or...
I think we've had two board meetings where we had a lot of discussion on it. I haven't heard anything, you know, since then. The students, obviously, and the building cabinet are still very much in favor of our doing that, and time to do it now.
Okay. And then the plan of action going forward, because this policy did contain some GPA language that we would like to keep, so we will continue to look at our policies and maybe incorporate some of that language in sooner rather than later. Okay.
Probably be taken up at our next meeting.
Sure. Are there any other questions or comments on this item?
I just had a question regarding it. We discussed it at the last meeting regarding if a school was requiring some sort of class rank, that we'd have some sort of information that the school, the college would be receiving. I just want, I don't know if I read that in here, as to how it would be, how that situation would be looked at, if a specific school wanted a class rank.
I think it could still be calculated for a specific student if it was required by scholarship application or something like that.
That's what I'm referring to.
Is that correct?
I'm trying to recall in our conversations, it seems unusual that a school would require rank.
rank. It seemed to me that the conversation was, if we don't have it, we don't need to provide it. If we don't typically do that, am I correct on that, Tom?
Yeah. There are some scholarships, they may require a student to be in the top ten percent or something like that, and then we would respond that, yes, that student qualifies. But we would not share a particular rank, but then we don't share rank.
It would simply be, yes, that student qualifies.
Okay. As someone going through that process right now, looking for colleges, what I have found is if student rank is not, or class rank is not available, they take another factor and double that factor. Though it's not necessary in many of the colleges.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes seven zero. Thank you. Thank you to our students and everybody who has come to talk about this topic. Okay, the next item is board committee reports. Instead of going through them all, I will ask, has any committee met this year?
Not yet.
I can mention an upcoming meeting, though. The audit committee will be meeting on September twenty-fifth at eight fifteen in the morning to review the draft audit report.
Survey will be coming out to communications and business practices to meet, hopefully the week of the eighteenth, maybe, if we can put a survey monkey out and see if we can...
August eighteenth?
No, September. The week of September eighteenth.
Really? Gloria, impressed.
Okay, now we move to public comment number two. Linda, has anybody signed up? No? Okay. And now we move on to board issues, ideas, and sharing. I do have one item that we wanted to talk about, and that relates to the earlier start times. I received an email and forwarded it to some of you from a community member who has contacts with administrators in other districts who actually have implemented earlier start times. And so she wanted to know if we were interested in having those administrators come and present here to us and tell us about the process, things that worked, hurdles that they're facing, and how they're addressing them. And if there is interest in that, we can set it up for our September board meeting.
Yes, absolutely. Is that earlier start times or later start times?
I'm sorry, later start times. Thank you, Kathy.
Start early enough.
How much earlier can we go?
Thank you for that, yep.
I didn't catch it at all.
I should have just said start times.
We'll just start at five o'clock in the morning.
Go through the night.
We'll get done by...
Christine, are these districts in this area?
Local districts.
Local districts.
Yeah, South Glenns Falls, I think, is the key one.
Oh, that's the key one.
And then Corinth is also done that, but the new superintendent in Corinth was the high school principal in South Glenns Falls.
Oh, so, okay. Okay.
Do we know if they're similar in size? I can't imagine, similar in size of our district?
South Glenns Falls, I think, is, I think, is a little smaller, but comparable. Corinth is much smaller.
Yeah.
Planal logistics is a huge factor.
Yes, yes.
How they work that out.
I think it'd be helpful to hear from people firsthand who are going, you know, maybe they already, they've already implemented it, so they went through that change and how it's working.
Okay, so we will plan to put that on the agenda then, in September, if there's, seems as though a majority would be interested in that.
The other thing, too, that I'd like maybe Marie could follow on, St. Lawrence University has been doing a study of the Glenns Falls district and the benefits or deficits of their change. And if there is a preliminary report, I'd love to take a peek at that.
Just to kind of piggyback on what we were just talking about, I was looking at the report that was in our information regarding, you were on, I think it was you, it was on, you and Judy were on that committee back in twenty-ten.
Transportation, yeah.
I really do worry about putting in a lot of money if it's only going to affect a fifteen-minute or twenty-minute increase. To me, that's kind of wasteful, because what's another fifteen, twenty minutes? I just feel like it needs to be substantial. Like if you're going forty-five minutes to an hour, to me, that's substantial. But for a fifteen-minute increase, for thousands of dollars being put towards it, I don't see that as being a substantial amount of time. And I don't really understand, I think we need to discuss that, I don't really understand why it's such a shortened amount of time, a little amount of time, and making a difference in reorganizing bus routes and et cetera. I can't wrap my head around that. I don't know why, it's just not as simple, move that one to this one and move on versus the increment being such a small change. That's what worries me, is putting in all this time and effort to change it by a few minutes. It's not going to affect my son much.
I think we sort of have to think outside of the box. I think that fifteen-minute thing was just simply a flip-flop shift, correct? Versus, as I said, thinking out of the box and maybe really changing the times and making them, you know, comparable down the line with, you know, with the other schools. So I think if your intent is to really change your start time, you're going to do it by more than fifteen minutes.
That's exactly my, I mean, I was just looking at the data that you guys came across, which is very informational. Can you imagine?
Four times we did that, that study.
I just, when I just saw that data, I was like, oh, all that thousands of dollars for minutes of change.
Exactly, and that's where we landed, too.
Yeah, and that's why I'm assuming that it's kind of, the kibosh was put on it then.
Okay, thank you for that. Does anybody have anything else for board issues, ideas, and sharing? Okay, so with that, we need a motion to adjourn the meeting. Seema, second. Kathy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you very much.